I'm one of them.
Sorry. Pretty much.
I told you. My fourth meeting, I thought it started at seven. It started at six thirty.
All right, good evening, everyone. We're getting here. You hear me? All right. Good evening, everyone. I will call this meeting to order. It is October 24th, 2024. It's a regular meeting of the Owletangie Local School District Board of Education. Ms. Heater, will you please call the roll?
Dr. Dabberco?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Ms. Schreiber?
Here.
Dr. Wallach?
Here.
Mr. Lester?
Here.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't believe we have any amendments to the agenda.
No.
Hearing none. Can I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Heater, please call the roll.
Any discussion?
No. All right, Ms. Heater.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
All right, so these are always our favorite meetings when we get to welcome so many families and students to come to the board meeting. We're very happy to have you all here and to honor those of you for the National Merit Semifinalist and Committed Students. We'll start that part in just a minute. I do want to highlight that while we welcome you all to stay for the rest of our meeting, you are free to leave after all of the students are recognized. So we will pause for just a minute or two to get through that once we've recognized everyone. Very briefly, for the President's Report, I do just want to highlight that about a week ago, we had the Bridging the Future event through our Bridge Ed program, which was really a wonderful event. I hope that some of you had the chance to show up and to meet some of the wonderful partners that we have in these programs. We had a chance, Dr. Wallach and Ms. Schreiber and I were all there, and we had a chance to talk with Director Dakin from the Ohio Department of Education and Workforce. He was very complimentary of the Owletangie program, recognized that what we're doing here is really filling a gap, right? We're filling that gap between what our students need to get into the workforce, the training that employers need to see in the workforce, and really helping to make that all work a lot more smoothly. That goes to everyone's benefit, especially as we look at the future of Ohio, where we have so many employers coming in. They need a trained and well-skilled workforce. And a lot of the work that we're doing here is really helping that to succeed. So he was very complimentary. He recognized the hard work of our team. We certainly want to recognize the hard work of our team. It's also important, and we stress this to him in our discussion, that public education be funded to be able to do that. I mean, that's a vital part of those efforts. It's ensuring that we have strong funding for public education. So I think they recognize that. There's certainly some more discussions to happen there. Since our last meeting, we had the Mental Health Committee, where we talked about stigma-breaking competition that we're working on as a district, as well as some programs that are being initiated by some Liberty students around like a TED Talk type of program or something specific.
TEDx, I think, yeah. Which is really exciting, because I think I mentioned, I've been part of other organizations and groups where, because it is a bit of a tedious task to really get the approval to host a TEDx event. And so I'm impressed with these kids for taking that initiative and working so hard to bring this event to Liberty. And hopefully, that's something that could be scaled across the district, too. We'll see how it goes.
Yeah, it's great. Any other updates since our last meeting from committees?
No.
I think so. Okay, we will move straight into our student recognition. So Dr. Dabberco will introduce the names and he'll explain everything. We all want to go down.
I'm waiting for the high sign. Good? I've been working on some stuff. Beatbox. Good? Tonight, we salute Owletangie students who are outstanding scholars and have achieved recognition in the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. A total of 61 students from Owletangie's four high schools earned a commended or semifinalist status as a result of their performance on the 2023 Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. Thirty-nine Owletangie students have qualified as commended scholars for the 2025 National Merit Scholarship Program. Most of them are here this evening. These students are among approximately 1.6 million high school students across the country who entered the program by taking the Preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test. These students placed among the top 50,000 highest scores. Those named commended students have demonstrated outstanding potential for academic success. Congratulations to our commended scholars. As your name is called, please proceed across the stage to have your picture taken with Superintendent Todd Meyer and Board President Brandon Lester. From Owletangie Berlin High School, Jaden Aki. Anshul Katta. Evan Weber. Vishash Uhaja. Joey Anand. Sarah Boris. Navadan Burnitu. Andrew Langen. Daniel Mattis. Lauren Metzler. Sarah Pennell. Tanush Shankar. Ayushi Tanija. Viad Vais. Rafika Badan. Adi Joshi. Varneka Mena. Ethan Pugh. Nikhil Raviya. Pia Shaw. Varun Triram. Saduna Sundar. Is that the last page?
It's the next one, after the one named.
Let me get this one. Who?
Yeah, go with him right now.
Nathan, okay. Nathan Sanchez Zarcos. Go to where?
Right where you ended.
Right here. Manas Irakulapati. Aishwarya Pandyan. Adrian Valalobos. Shre Yagnik. Alex Zhao. Tanush Prasti. Tanush Prasti. In addition, 22 Owletangie students have qualified as semifinalists. These academically talented high school seniors have an opportunity to continue in the 70th Annual Competition for some 6,800 National Merit Scholarships worth nearly $26 million. That will be offered next spring. Those Owletangie students named 2025 National Merit Scholarship semifinalists here with us tonight are from Owletangie Berlin High School, Adeline Bowen. Grace Hightcamp. John Peterson. From Owletangie High School, Pradeep Adhari. Sanjay Gadmisun. Jacob Hirsch. Bahin Kakala. Arya Trivedi. From Owletangie Liberty High School, Sharif Anani. Anushka Chaba. Ethan Greshop. Levi Lee. Herschel Nitala. Kason Palmer. Rishi Rajamani. Anik Shetty. From Owletangie Orange High School, Kushi Gagrani. Janani Kundulu. Rachel Tong. Jack Whiskeman. Congratulations to all the outstanding students, their families, and teachers. Thank you.
Mr. Lester, as the rest of the board comes up, I would just like to congratulate all of the students again for this high honor. Would like to recognize our four high school principals here and congratulate all the parents and families. And every time I get a chance to say this in public, thank you for sending us such wonderful kids. It's truly our pleasure, and we enjoy working with these young individuals each and every day. Thank you.
All right, good. So we'll move on to the next item on our agenda. We have Representative Lorenz here, who is here to offer a district commendation. So welcome Representative Lorenz and happy to hear from you.
Thank you, President Lester, distinguished guests. Congratulations to all the kids. Great job, you guys. I know you're gone, but that's okay. I'll be really brief. I appreciate the board giving me a minute to speak with you. You know, before I talk about the proclamation, I want to take a second to recognize something that you said, President Lester, about workforce development. I'm honored and blessed to be the chairman for the Ohio House of Representatives for the Economic and Workforce Development Committee. And it's very important and very vital for me. I just want to echo your comments about providing solid education, working to bring dollars into public education, and I believe very diligently about doing those things. And I've been honored, and I appreciate working with people like Todd Meyer and your board and our other Delaware County schools to help make that a realization. We'll rule on the biannual budget in June. And you may say, well, it's only October. You know, we've got a long way to go. But rest assured, those conversations about bringing dollars back to our public schools, specifically Owletangie, are things that are really important to me and that I'm working on steadfastly. So enough about that. What I wanted to do is just provide a proclamation of recognition to the board and acknowledge the GFOA approval of fantastic financial reporting. I think it's really important that, as public officials, we take that opportunity to recognize the way that we are being transparent in our financial reporting with our taxpayers. This is a Congress or a board that exists not only in the United States, but also in Canada. So it's a very distinguished honor. It's my time on Powell City Council and as mayor. This was something that we received several times, and I was really proud of our staff. And so you guys do all the heavy lifting here, but our boards and our commission and our staff people, and I know that our treasurer is not here today, he's on holiday. But I think it's really important that we pay tribute and acknowledge the performance and display the transparency and celebrate what we're doing for all of our taxpayers. And so I have a small commendation, happy to present it, and just wanted to take a second to recognize the board and the school district for their outstanding achievement in financial reporting on their popular report. So I'm not sure who wants it. I'll give it to you, Todd, if you want. Congratulations, and I think it's something that really demonstrates accessibility and transparency to our community, and it's something that's very important to me. So thank you for letting me speak on it. And there's that.
Thank you.
You got it. You got it. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, Representative Lorenz. And I would be remiss without, you know, speaking just a little bit about our Treasury Department, which does such tremendous work with our financials. Obviously, as you mentioned, Treasurer Jenkins is not here, but Ms. Heater has stepped in ably to fill in his shoes. So this is really a great recognition of all the work that that entire department does.
And if I may, Mr. President, I've spent a lot of time working and conversating with Mr. Jenkins. And, you know, he's moved here. He lives in our district. He's got skin in the game. He cares about Owletangie. He's a really outstanding guy. He drives his staff to do outstanding things. And, you know, I really appreciate him as well. So thank you for bringing that up.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we will then move on. Thank you, Representative Lorenz. We will move on to Mr. Meyer for the superintendent's report.
Okay. All right, good evening. I think it's still on. There we go. All right, so I first want to start off by recognizing fall sports winding down. So these are some of our teams who have finished state tournaments already, and we still have a bunch of teams still in the tournament. But want to recognize Meadow T, state runner-up in girls' golf from Owletangie High School. Also, you can see the Placers in golf from Liberty and Owletangie. But also, I'd like to recognize Owletangie Liberty High School Boys Golf as a team, state runner-up. And then Berlin High School Girls Tennis, state runner-up, Saleel, who competed last week and was state runner-up. So would like to, for sure, recognize their hard work and the hard work of all of our coaches in our schools and our athletics departments. Want to recognize, Mr. Lester, you brought this up, but again, wanted to recognize our work with our Bridge Ed program and Bridging the Future last week. And want to congratulate Molly Preston, our Assistant Director of Strategic Partnerships, who did a really good job of putting this whole event together along with our communications department. Just a fantastic turnout that night. And one thing I want to say is, we're really just scratching the surface here, because it's so important that we continue to prepare our students for life after high school. And life after high school means a lot of different things. So it's incumbent upon us as a district to make sure that we continue to prepare our students. And it's critical that we continue to create strong and long-lasting partnerships with our corporate and business community, because the K-12 public education, education is the pipeline for future workforce. And I'm so proud of the work that we've done just in two years with the partnerships that we have and the opportunities that we're creating, not only for our students, but also our staff with these corporations. our staff with these corporations. I just want to highlight that probably the best quote, Ms. Preston sent this to us, and this is feedback from Intel. And Intel was set up and they brought the VR goggles. So we had a third grade student, and this is good third grade because the awareness piece doesn't, it's almost too late to start in high school. So middle school, elementary school, it's important for us to continue to create this awareness. But he said, so little third grader, and he was wearing the goggles for about 10 minutes, but after wearing the VR goggles for 10 minutes, said, wow, I want to work here. So a third grader. So I thought that was pretty cool from that night. Also, I'd like to recognize, this is a new partnership that we just started. This is a pilot through a grant, and we had some district folks that went out to the Stockhands Horses for Healing Farm probably a little over a month ago. And so we connected them with our Oasis program, and we do have students participating and really positive feedback so far. So we're working through that pilot this year through a grant, providing opportunities for some of our Oasis students. Want to highlight this partnership, so facilitated by the Olentangie Education Foundation. District leaders met with PTO members from our schools this morning to really talk about an overview of the district and for sure, the great things that are going on in the district, but also to continue a conversation and answer questions that they may have as they help volunteer and provide service in our schools and our key communicators out there in the community on what we do in the schools. So we're excited to host them this morning. And again, one of my favorite things to do when I get in, when I get the opportunity to get into schools, so I had the opportunity to join 20 of our Teacher Academy students, so 20 Teacher Academy students today, as well as myself, read in 30 first-grade classrooms across the district promoting literacy. And just a joy to be in with the first graders. Very engaging, they're very curious, they ask great questions. So a lot of fun today there at Allen Creek with the first graders. And then, this is another co-activity. So the PTO over at Glen Oak did a fundraiser for principal for a day, and so they, two students were selected for principal for the day at Glen Oak Elementary School, Kyla, fifth grader, and then Farat, a fourth grader. Part of their experience was them having an opportunity to come over to central office to meet with the superintendent, me, which again, that was just a blast. But I asked them, I said, okay, what's your favorite thing about being the principal? So this is what they said, to get into classroom, to get into the classrooms and help others, and also to observe what's the learning that's going on in the classroom. And I thought that was really, really good. And then the other cool thing, they said, for them to talk on the walkie-talkie, they actually got to solve a problem. I don't know if the toilet was overflowing or wouldn't flush or something, but hey, somebody let them know and they took care of it. So that was fun. Superintendent action items, standard action items tonight, but would like to highlight two retirements. Tom Bogard retiring from Berlin Middle School after 32 years of service, and then Kathy Bowes retiring from Heritage Elementary School after 20 years of service. Also on the agenda tonight, from the Technology Department, we have a recommendation to purchase ViewSonic machines along with carts, and those are awarded, I think this is our ninth round, awarded through teacher application process. And then approval of a resolution for the purchase of competitive retail electric service for the district from the lowest bid received by Meta. So again, it's something that we continue to do when we get into these consortiums as far as saving money where we can get the best rate for electric through the cooperative purchasing program. So with that, couple light, just important dates because we have a quick turnaround again for the next board meeting, November 7th, which will be back at OAO, and then first quarter report cards will be available in Power School tomorrow. So any questions?
Just one quick comment, Mr. Meyer. I want to thank you and your team for your hard work on SB 29. Teachers do best when they don't have to worry about things that aren't going on outside of the classroom at the State House, and you had our Olentangie team prepared for SB 29. And not every teacher across Ohio was, so I want to thank you for that. When we lose time, teachers worrying about what they can use and what they can't, it hurts our students' academic performance, and you had everybody seamlessly moving forward. So thank you to you and your team, and also for your late night update earlier this week. I appreciate it.
Hey, I'm always available. But I do want to recognize our academics team who really worked tirelessly, starting back in the summer, tackling the new law and then obviously what that, what the law means for Olentangie and obviously for us, implementation of and communication. So academics team, curriculum, instructional technology, communications was involved in that, technology, so just a lot of people involved in that. And, you know, we have some really, really good people in the organization, so for sure, recognition to all of them. Thank you.
Any other comment, questions? All right, good. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Ms. Heater, for the treasurer's report.
Yes, currently or this time, we don't have any updates, but our action items on tonight's agenda are the recommendation to approve the last board meeting minutes on October 10th, to approve the acceptance of donations, one from Olentangie, to Olentangie High School from the Olentangie Baseball Diamond Club boosters, and another to Olentangie High School from the Olentangie Athletic Boosters for a supplemental. And then the 2025 updated appropriations and approval of the September 2024 financial reports.
Great. Any questions for Ms. Heater? All right, certainly want to recognize the, I mean, we appreciate all donations, absolutely, but a very large donation from the Diamond Club at Olentangie of 301,800, certainly. Very generous. Okay, do we have any public participation?
I was told now when we were coming up.
All right, sounds good. So we will move into our board consent action items. We only have one of those here tonight, which is the recommended approval of the fiscal year '25 second batch of board policy updates. We had the readings of these previously with Dr. Fede. Dr. Fede's not here tonight. Does anybody have any questions or comments before we go into that? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to approve the board policy update number two.
So moved.
Oh, and a second. At a second?
I'll second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Ms. Heater, please call the roll.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, we will then move into our treasurer consent action items. Ms. Heater?
Board members, I recommend the approval of the following items, items A through D, and the treasurer's consent action unless, I'm asking that you approve these items by one single action and vote unless you would like to discuss any of these items separately.
And those are, those four items are the four that you just read a second ago.
Yes.
So would anyone like to discuss any of these separately?
No, I'd just say, I'd like to have Ms. Heater back because she's far more brief.
Very efficient. We'll note that for the record.
Second.
And we'll add that to the performance review. Good, all right. So can I have a motion to approve?
All moved.
And a second.
Dr. Wallach, how about you? You take this one.
All right, Ms. Heater, please call the roll.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, Mr. Meyer, the superintendent consent action.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Lester. Board members, I recommend approval of the following superintendent consent action items, A through H, A, specific human resource item certified, B, specific human resource item supplementals, C, specific human resource items classified, D, specific human resource items classified substitutes, E, approval of student for early graduation, F, approval of tuition-free attendance for J. L. Timothy Floridis, who has reached his senior year at Orange High School and no longer resides in the district, G, approval of technology items, and H, approval of business management and facilities items. I'm asking you to approve these items by one single action vote, action and vote unless you'd like to discuss any of these items separately.
Okay, would anyone like to discuss these separately? All right, hearing none, can I have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
All right, and a second. I will second so we can keep it moving. Any discussion? All right, Ms. Heater, please call the roll.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes.
Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
All right, I will then entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, Ms. Heater.
Bear with me one second. Dr. Dabberco?
Yes.
Ms. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Wallach?
Yes.
Mr. Lester?
Yes. All right, we are adjourned.